We would gladly welcome here to us in Geneva. We will be pleased to provide any additional information you may require regarding the work of the UN, Human Rights Council and the UPR. Looking forward to hearing from you, I would be, yours sincerely, Martin Chonggo, Secretary General. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, Distinguished Honourable Ladies and Gentlemen, that is the reading of a certain communication from the RPU by the State of Parliamentary Year. Thank you, sir.
Distinguished colleagues, this seminar manual will not be and kept as a record for further action and there is here a note. Yes.
The tear communication from the RPU. Honorable Regent Nalwakun, Speaker, House of Representatives, Cabinet of Representatives, Moruga, Liberia. Geneva, March twenty five. Dear Mr. Speaker, the common principles for support of parliament were adopted by the RPU on October twenty fourteen. Rooted in over forty years of collective wisdom and experience, they were developed by parliament themselves to provide a framework to guard parliamentary support efforts so that they are more effective and impactful. Their emphasis on principles such as ensuring that support is gathered, first and foremost, by parliament itself aiming for sustainable outcomes, utilizing local expertise and more. In twenty twenty four, parliament marked the tenth anniversary of the common principles commemorated during the one hundred and forty ninth RPU Assembly in October. This marks Nalwakun's set as an occasion to celebrate the common principles and recognize their beneficial impact, but also added as a reminder of the continual importance of strengthening parliamentary development, especially as a defense to the democratic baseline being witnessed in many countries around the world. To address this, parliament reiterated their call to action for universal endorsement of the principles. To date, one hundred and eighty four parliaments and partners have endorsed, including seventy eight percent of national parliaments. Each endorsement not only strengthens visibility of the common principles, but also their influence in gathering future cooperation and enhancing its effectiveness. As one of the few remaining parliaments that have not yet endorsed the common principles, I am pleased to extend this special invitation to join our growing community. Your parliament and John simply by notifying the RPU through a letter confirming the endorsement out from yourself, the Secretary General of the Parliament or the President of the RPU. No financial contribution is required. The RPU will be promoting new endorsements from parliament during the one hundred and fifty assembly taking place in Tukis. Tasking, you be based, you be based down from five to nine April twenty five. We will be delighted to count your parliament and mount the new secretaries and to amplify the good news on this occasion. If you are not able to attend the RPU Assembly personally, we invite you to submit a letter out directly in advance or via your country's delegation who will be attending. We look forward to celebrating your parliament's addition to this global community. Yours sincerely, Martin Chonggo, Secretary General. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, Distinguished Honourable Ladies and Gentlemen, that is the tear communication from the RPU. Thank you, sir.
Leadership deceased of this. The request to colleagues to attend a program from the fifth to the ninth, I think, right?
Yes.
Parliamentary District Police, we entertain the motion, what is a great pleasure having listened to the reading of this communication. My colleague.
Our co-presiding, co-presiding, distinguished colleagues, I have been listening to the communication from the inter-parliamentary year among in all, in all other communications.
Our colleagues. At RPU to represent us.
I move that in our team, the second, that said communication be noted, leadership deceased and appropriate to restore be provided in our team, the second.
Yes.
Uh, well, excuse me, my colleague. To the best of my collection, we have some of our colleagues that have been appointed to represent this body of the RPU. Can we confirm that for the Chief Clerk to inform our decision? My Chief Clerk, if that is true, these are individuals that should represent us officially.
Mister Presiding Officer, Sir Co-Presiding Officer, Honourable Ladies and Gentlemen, yes, we do have a dedication of this august body to represent us at the RPU.
Without sir, the motion is. Until you do the rephrase your motion. You have, where have, my Chief Clerk?
Okay, it's clear now.
Okay, it's clear.
Having heard that, permit me to restate my motion. That the communication received from the RPU be noted and the dedication uh be propelled a consultation with the leadership to make the adequate representation of this august body during said conference. If I can obtain a second.
Do I hear a second? With the motion being settled, the distinguished colleagues, are you ready to vote? All those who feel the motion, make the motion here. Against, motion is carried next.
As per the manner we go to be, our endless mass communication.
It says, it says C. The word C.
Our Anthony Williams. Honorable Regent Nalwakun, Speaker, fifty three House of Representatives, National Legislature Republic of Liberia. Dear Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, subject, request craving the indulgence of Plenary to invite Authority of the Liberia Council of Churches, LCC, to provide updates on the ongoing internal conflict within the Methodist Churches in Liberia. I present compliments and respectfully pray the indulgence of Plenary to invite the Authority of the Liberia Council of Churches, LCC, to appear before this august body to provide clarity on the ongoing developments within the United Methodist Church of Liberia. Over the past months, the UMC has been embroiled in internal conflicts that have created divisions amongst members raising concerns within the broader community. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, I am requesting the LCC to provide updates on any intervention they have undertaken to mediate and resolve these disputes as their insights will be invaluable in understanding the root causes of the conflict and the progress, if any, towards achieving reconciliation within the UMC. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, while I acknowledge and respect the principle that the state and the church are distinct institutions and that none should be interfered in the affairs of the other. We must also recognize that certain aspects of this conflict, particularly the issue of ownership of properties across the nation, are of paramount concern. These matters have, these matters have implications that extend beyond the church and into the realm of public interest, necessitating the involvement of state actors to foster peace and harmony. Furthermore, it is imperative to address the involvement of the Liberian National Police in this conflict. Reports indicate that law enforcement has been called upon to intervene in disputes of property ownership and to make material, and to make material bring escalating tensions. We seek to understand the circumstances that led to police involvement and the measures taken to ensure the safety and security of all parties involved. I trust that the insight provided by the FCC will guide this honorable body in addressing these pressing issues and contributing to a resolution that upholds the values of unity, peace and justice. Respectfully submitted, Honorable Anthony F. Williams, Representative Piro Sorogan, district, electoral district of two Maryland counties. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, Distinguished Honourable Ladies and Gentlemen, that is the reading of the communication from our Anthony F. Williams.
Distinguished colleagues, you listen to the reading of the communication from our distinguished colleagues, our Williams. What is a great pleasure? Our, our.
Mister Presiding, Mister Co-Presiding Colleagues, let me extend my thanks to the honourable gentleman from district number two Maryland County, our Anthony Williams, for bringing this issue to the House's attention. With the communication being read, I move, if I may, obtain a second. The communication being received and sent to the Committee on Peace and Representation to report one week after our return, if I may obtain a second.
With the motion being settled, the distinguished colleagues, are you ready to vote? All those who feel the motion begin with my say here. Against, this act by Chief Clerk, yes.
Communication from TIA, Teleport International Alliance. It said the agenda.
Off the face.
Which was? Word. Subject. Request for resharing appearances before the Plenary. Dear Madam Sir, we acknowledge receipt of your communication dated March eighteen twenty five, inviting the management of Teleport International Alliance, TIA, to appear before the Honorable House of Representatives, Plenary, on Tuesday, March eighteen twenty five, at ten AM. Regrettably, we must bring to your attention that the letter was delivered to us at eight fifty five AM this morning, on the same day of the scheduled appearance, leaving sufficient time to properly prepare and adjust our prior commitments. Given the short notice and the fact that our management team is thoroughly engaged in unavoidable component operations, we respectfully request that our appearance be rescheduled to a later date. We value the opportunity to address the matters raised in the communication signed by Honorable Representative Johnson S. M. Williams and assure the Honorable House of Representatives of our full cooperation in addressing any concerns. Kindly provide us with a new date that will allow adequate time for preparation and alignment of our schedules to ensure a meaningful engagement with the Plenary. For your easier reference, I am passing there to the cover of your letter that was received this morning with the receipt date and time. Thank you for your understanding and consideration. We remain committed to fostering transparency and collaboration. Yours sincerely, William F. Summer Junior. Managing Director. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, Distinguished Honourable Ladies and Gentlemen, that is the reading of a communication from the Teleport International Alliance, asking for rescheduling of the appearance before this day.
Distinguished colleagues, you listen to the communication from TIA has been read. What is a great pleasure? Our pretty much ready. Off the face, what's the point of off the face?
Thank you, Mister Presiding. Mister Presiding, Mister Co-Presiding Colleagues. Mister Presiding, the communication just read by the Deputy Chief Clerk was in response to the appearance of TIA and LTA. We just listened to an excuse from, uh, TIA. So I want to know whether there is any excuse for the letter from LTA as well.
Do we have excuse for LTA? Okay, we refer to the motion. Our pretty much ready.
Honorable Presiding, Co-Presiding, fellow colleagues. Owing to the fact that today we will be closing the first section of our twenty twenty five deliberations and given the fact that this communication has come to the Plenary and the fact that this house works through committee. Honorable Presiding, I move, if I can obtain a second, that this communication be called into the Committee on Telecommunications and the committee continue the work while we are on break, I so move.
Do I hear a second? With the motion being settled, the distinguished colleagues, to have the communications returned over to LTA to continue to do our work as we take our leave of break. Are you ready to vote? All those who feel the motion, please begin with my say here. Against, motion is carried, Presiding is in flag, distinguished colleagues. Thank you, yes.
Communication from Honorable Emmanuel Yeh. Honorable Regent Nalwakun, Speaker, Honorable House of Representatives, Moruga, Republic of Liberia. Dear Honorable Kung, subject, requesting Plenary to manage the Liberia Bank for Development and Investment, LBDR, to explain the case, the cost, the salary disagreement covering tension in the working environment of the Boko Washington Institute, BWI, and state corrective measures to resolve the issue. Honorable Speaker and honourable members of the House of Representatives, please accept my performance and I write to pray the, the power of Plenary to request the management of Liberia Bank for Development and Investment, LBDR, to explain and set immediate remedy on the disagreement covering tension in the work, working environment and the Boko Washington Institute. About months now, workers and employees of the Boko Washington Institute have complained and raised the issue of not receiving a total amount from LBDR as stated in their salary prompts or messages they receive at the month from LBDR. Then, they have received, they, they have reached out to the permission of BWI and the management of LBDR in Kakata, on numerous occasions. Yet, the two institutions have failed to give a clean, clear interpretation or explain the cause of the salary disagreement. Please accept, Mister Speaker and fellow colleagues, the renewed assurances of my highest consideration and esteem. Sincerely, Honorable Emmanuel Yeh, Representative, District Number Four, Maggiore County. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, Distinguished Honourable Ladies and Gentlemen, that is the reading of the communication from your colleague, Honorable Emmanuel Yeh. Thank you, sir.
Distinguished colleagues, you listen to the communication from our distinguished colleagues. Our Yeh, what is a great pleasure? Mark, give me the marketing.
Mister Presiding, Mister Co-Presiding Colleagues, let me extend thanks to the honourable gentleman from District Number Four, Maggiore County, for flagging issue emanating from his county, particularly the Premier of Education in our country, the BWI. Mister Presiding, with the communication coming from our colleague and it's key that we allow him to read the pieces of what is actually unfolding at the BWI. Without being said, I move, if I may obtain a second, that the communication be open giving the proper, the opportunity to elaborate between two and five minutes and after which the connection should be sent to the committees on banking accuracy and education to report one week. To report one week upon our return.
With that motion being settled, the distinguished colleagues, are you ready to vote? All those who feel the motion say yeah. Against, our Yeh, Yeh, you have the floor.
Thank you, every speaker. Honorable Deputy Speaker, Co-Presiding Fellow colleagues. I have been sad of reason concerning the way in which our people have been treated, specifically Maggiore District, OBWI. Almost a year, our people have been treated in a form in manner of if to say BWI is formed in the jungle. And this have been almost year, two years plus now, if I'm not mistaken. The workers at the BWI Boko Washington Institute have been receiving information from the bank, RB, LBDR, sorry. Whenever there is information from payment, the bank will have to text each worker and information written there will be like the amount total, getting back to the bank to receive salary and they will have to receive half of that amount or ilopilu. And that have been raising concern. Approach a pen on a series of occasion, no result, institution, no result. And that bring attention as we speak now to the institution. There are a lot of whom have been having problems. Can you imagine, test coming and you're receiving five hundred dollars and going back to receive, telling you that you receive one hundred and ninety dollars? So some whom are being disturbed. And having been the people's servant, we have started to bring this to our colleagues to seek the indulgence of Plenary to invite the LBDI app name to give reason why our people should be treated that way, so some.
So, uh, my colleague, he won't purchase and then he referred to the motion, please. Very likely support Maggiore.
Thank you very much, Honorable Deputy Speaker and distinguished, Co-Presiding Distinguished Colleagues. Like my friend and Adelon in my area has articulated, the situation is not only affecting the people in Maggiore County, it also affects my constituents as well because I got people from Liberia County who are working with BWI in all parts of Maggiore County. That situation was being brought to my attention on the panel last week that continuously the LBDI or the institutions send messages on the phones of their workers. For example, they send five hundred and at the end of the day go to the bank, you receive two fifty, three hundred, which of course honor our law and is criminal. And I feel very strongly about this. My Honorable Speaker, with the business of the BWI law with the bank should be able to appear and discuss what is actually happening with the test message system is, is as one of, it is the bank or it is the institutions that we can know because we are the people deputies. The people for whom we are here when their interest and happiness are being threatened, we are honored with mental obligation to make it sure that this interest and happiness are protected. That is the reason why I want to say thank you very much, Emmanuel Yeh, and I stand with you in this debate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With the conclusion of our presentation, the motion took precedent and there is here a pass of order. Thank you. Yes.
So folks who are just joining us, would like to say welcome to ELBC, LNTV Liberia Live. My name is Yesa Suba and I'm bringing forth this live broadcast from the Executive Pathetum here on Bro Street. So today.
So we call for audit on absent letters. I still need to be very nice to the top of the agenda. Chairman of the House of Lords.
Honorable Deputy and Presiding, Co-Presiding Colleagues, as is Martin said, that injustice to one is injustice to all. I recall, uh, two days ago, some of the colleagues of this august body were suspended consistent with the rule on the basis of absenteeism. So, for the Grosse Infrary this morning informed the committee that others are going beyond the statutory period of two weeks. And even those, they are, even though they have gone beyond the statutory period as provided for by the start of two weeks, they are yet to come to section. And I, I think it is important to bring to attention of this august body so that we can all be aware uh, to avoid taking actions on certain group of people and leaving certain group of people. Having said that, permit me to quote the call on the podium, the Grosse Infrary to provide us this absenteeism.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Calling to my record, my little first colleagues being out of here for three weeks. Our session for three weeks. Making the absentee five days, especially the absentee. Thank you very much.
Distinguished. Distinguished colleagues, uh, as you heard from the Grosse Infrary, I would want to say this to the body. Uh, the weeks that are captured are the number of days in there. But then, I just said some are more than the number of three weeks because some days we cannot absentee. And the rule, if I capture it right, say weeks. When I say the notion of days, it's a weeks. So with three weeks, they absent. I think it's important, Honorable Presiding, Co-Presiding Colleagues, to bring to your attention for you to be able to finalize this matter in order to avoid injustice to one or to all while others are being penalized. while others are being penalized for the same offense. Having said that, Honorable Presiding, Co-Presiding Colleagues, permit me to apparently reduce my height, as the heart helping them in the hands of the Gabo and that of the plenary to take their appropriate action in the interest of the Liberian people to avoid tax pay of money being used by our colleagues who do not come to work. Thank you so much.
You listen to the briefing from the Chair President of Rules for Administration, supported by the ruling clerk of the Honourable, the ruling clerk of the Honourable House of Representatives. What is your way of pleasure? Colleagues, what is your way of pleasure over Abas Jones?
Mr. Presiding, Mr. Co-Presiding Colleagues. Mr. Presiding, this house was by the constitution of the Republic of Liberia, the rule of the Fifty-Fifth Legislature, and also precedent. We can all agree that in the Fifty-Fifth Legislature, there have been series of suspensions. And those suspensions are based on the violation of our rules. With that being said, our rule, Rule Twenty-One, calls for members who are absent from section consistently for four meeting days, which constitute two weeks. It has been recorded, and we've been informed that some of our colleagues do have been waiting, been reminded, but they have consistently refused to come to work, leaving the Liberian people to be denied of resources generated to improve their livelihood, or rather, individual who refuse to come to work are benefiting from tax pay of money. With that being said, I move, if I may, a tear second, that Rule Forty-Eight, when seven C be invoked, that the individuals, particularly the individual just named, be suspended with all of the benefit and privileges as a lawmaker in terms of financing, be with help until he can complete his suspension, if I may, a tear second.
To the movement, I think it's our people, need to be clear on the date, how many days?
According to, according to section of Rule Forty-eight, seven C, say that members should be punished for thirty working days. So in my motion, I say, section forty-eight, point seven C be invoked. And for those who are not opportune to read the rule, they say member can be suspended for up to thirty meeting days. So we are invoking the rule to suspend the Honorable Gentleman from, uh, Babalu County. Honorable Luther Collins from Babalu County to be suspended for thirty working days, meeting days.
Distinguished colleagues, you listen to the motion made by our distinguished colleagues from Magiri County, requesting the House of Representatives to support his motion for the suspension of our colleague, Honorable Lucas Collins, for thirty working days, meeting days. Are you ready to vote? Already, Honorable. Clear?
Honorable Presiding, Co-Presiding, to my colleague from Magiri County, I will be ready if the following amendments can be accepted. One, that the thirty meeting days or section days, he should not be seen around the facility of the House of Representatives. Two, that in an event, there is a recall or an extension, it shall not be part of the thirty meeting days except our regular working calendar. So I hope that my colleague, uh, and if there is a motion of reconsideration, it must be tested right now, after the vote is taken. Thank you so much.
Thank you to the Honorable Gentleman from Bum County. You made three amendments, but I will consider two and reject one. On the issue of our colleagues who will be suspended today, not being seen anywhere around the capital, that is accepted. On the issue of motion for reconsideration to be tested after the vote, that is considered. On the issue of meeting days, if we were to be recalled, that is rejected.
Honorable Smobaba.
Honorable, uh, Deputy Speaker, Honorable Presiding, Deputy Presiding, and Distinguished Colleagues. I, I would like to set the basis before making the amendment. Basis one, according to the rule from my own, uh, rule board, when I talk about three or one week, when I say one week absentee, I think they were referring to the section attendance. Because the clerk is not scheduled, maybe based in our offices, to carry on attendance, that people can refer to it as three weeks or two weeks. I think I, the clerk making more here by saying five days. And five days is not the timeframe for suspension. So I would like to say to the movement, if amendment one, if you can, I re, you know, examine it first, and accept that we gave them the timeframe in which the suspension should be implemented. Another one, two amendment two. I think I previously, I listened to, I've been sitting here, I listened to all other cases involving suspension. People were given letter to come, and according to the twenty eighty I, the District One I, I think people working under your employment should be given a letter, first warning, second warning, and third warning. So based upon that, that's the law we all make, the law can promote. So based upon that, I'm urging you, if we can get, we can do the letter inviting Luther Ascolis, ask a warning, then we can take off from there. That's the two amendment two. Order for one. You need police to give you order here, you need police.
Thank you. Police, please give the colleague a chance. The movement please respond.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. District Number Three, Masurano County. Mr. Presiding, we have to understand that this house is a rule-based house.
Let's start, let's start, we need police to handle it.
Our rules are strict and clear, and in simple English, that can be understood by. Mr. Presiding, our rule say working.
Order, 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 Honorable Smobaba, you are giving your turn, please.
Our rule say meeting days. And the Honorable Gentleman from District Number Three, we agree that he comes to section, Aaron, Tuesday and Thursday. And when you count the weeks of the month, Tuesday and Thursday do not appear seven times in one week. So it means that, Chief, you were given your time to raise your awareness. Based upon that, his argument on meeting day should be several, as was read by the stenographer, and so reject. No information. On the issue of us not informing our colleagues, Honorable Presiding, let the Honorable Gentleman from District Number Three be fair. Each member of the Fifty-Fifth Legislature here did not vote for him, nor did they vote for the individual in question. The employee, I mean the employer of that individual, I believe they've been denied because he's not coming in section to represent them. He says who, take a pay, oh, did it busy, and he doesn't come to section. And let me say to you, our rule is clear, Rule Twenty-One is clear. On the basis of Rule Twenty-One, I reject the two amendments from our colleague.
No information.
Last, let me take the last information to see. What's the point of information?
The point of information, Honorable President.
Honorable, please, Co-Presiding, Distinguished Colleagues, Honorable.
Let it be known by this progress body that the committee on Rules for Administration, through her research, came to the conclusion or the realization that few years back, to be specific, in the Fifty-Term, some members of the Fifty-Term were suspended. During the actual suspension, it was pronounced as section of meeting days, and those number of days were typically later within the calendar month. Take for example, Honorable Samuel G. Koga, Honorable Heron Fonge, were suspended for eight meeting days, constituting one month. Honorable Opie Kopa was suspended for the upper twenty-four meeting days, constituting three months. At the time, there was no, there was no break interval as it is now. But with the break intervals, with the break interval as it is now, the meeting days extend even beyond the break, if it is not completed within the period. So, Honorable Presiding, uh, Distinguished Colleagues, I tell you wise to bring to attention, as a committee that have the statutory responsibility to ensure that the rule of this, uh, plenary is fully implemented, to bring that precedent to the attention of some of our colleagues, who were, who was a, uh, privilege to obtain said information. Thank you so much.
Distinguished colleagues, with the information made, with all of the unwerness to the motion made by our distinguished colleagues from Magiri County, Honorable Abas Jones, are you ready to vote? All those who feel the motion made by Honorable Abas Jones, please raise your hand. Please, Agis. Those, Agis. Those, Asdi. Please take note of my response, please. I need four, Agis. Thank you. Those, Aspi. Look, sir.
Honorable Deputy Speaker and Presiding Officer, Honorable Co-Presiding Officer, Honorable ladies and gentlemen, there are twenty-seven for one Agis and one Assteng. Thank you very much.
Twenty-seven for distinguished colleagues, the motion is carried. In addition, our colleague, Honorable Luther Collins of Babalu County is being suspended. In compliance with the motion that was made by the distinguished colleagues from Magiri County, and it is hereby ordered, we encourage our colleague not to defy or challenge the mandate of plenary. Hope that you take note and govern yourself. Thank you. And it is here by so order.
Mr. Presiding, Co-Presiding, Fellow Colleagues. I observe that, uh, in our last, Mr. Presiding, I observed that in our last sitting, in our last session, actually, your Honorable Seven Puff Puff a letter before plenary requesting the appearance of the G five plus company. And there was a unanimous vote through a motion Puff Puff by our colleague of ours that G five should officially appear here today in plenary so as to state reasons why they have to enlarge or extend default debt on almost all of the provisions of their incentive, contract incentive agreement, investment incentive agreement. So it amazes me to see that, having officially communicated to that company by this plenary through the office of the Chief Clerk, without any respect, without any regard to this progress body as to why they are not here today, we see that this institution, this company, as a king, as they have done before, where being a representative of the electoral district number four, there was an issue with this same company and their staff, where they were happy to dismiss them, and I officially communicated to them so I could intervene as to how we could resolve the issue. To my amazement again, I got a letter from, from Momo and Momo's Law Firm, Johnny's Momo. Uh, Councilor Momo requesting that the company will not appear, and that the law member who was elected by over fifteen thousand voters in that district constituted the majority in that district has no authority to intervene into matters relating to our residents of the district, our youth who gain employment with that institution and were being dismissed. So today again, we are here, having gotten an official communication from plenary. So, Mr. Presiding, Mr. Presiding, fellow colleagues. I want to move, if I can obtain a second, that... Mr. Presiding, Mr. Co-Presiding, colleagues, Mr. Presiding, uh, I understand the concern that the Honorable Gentleman from District Number 4 has particularly my issue surrounding his people abroad on this floor. He communicated with this body and the body took a decision to invite the company in question. On the agenda before us, I think key cause for the appearance, it will be prudent enough, we refer to the office of the Chief Clerk, uh, when that session is brought to us to ask whether the guests are here. And if they are not here in keeping with our legislative practice, an action will be taken. So that's my observation because I heard the Honorable Gentleman, who is the proponent of the communication, was on his meet to raise the motion. So as a member, Mr. Presiding, I tell you...
With the submission of Honorable Judge Jones, you have recognized our way forward.
Honorable Presiding, Honorable Presiding, uh, so it is just prudent in keeping with what I said, we refer to the Chief Clerk office to read the communication and if there is any reason, uh, why the guests are here or not here, then we can make the way forward.
Chief, please respond, Honorable General, General Unit for observation, please. Come again?
Uh, the District Number 4 law, they call high taxes agenda with observation only to introduce one of his communication, which is unfair to what happens there.
How was your answer, Honorable General? You request a messalina, Honorable? Honorable General, Honorable General? Thank you. Honorable Chief Clerk, please respond. Honorable Thomas P, I propose to chair along with Honorable General.
Mr. Deputy Speaker, Presiding Officer, Honorable Ladies and Gentlemen, as per amendment on March 17, the office of the Chief Clerk communicated to the G5 Plus Grace Global Company. The said communication was received by one Kevally Rufus. But I did not get any response to that communication. I'm taking it back to hear that the Honorable may have a communication from the lawyers representing the company. That must have brought to my attention and I do not see for that. Thank you.
With Mr. Presiding, Mr. Co-Presiding, distinguished colleagues, with that information being provided from the Chief Clerk of the House of Representatives, I will now move, if I may attend a second, that in keeping with Article 44 of the labyrinth constitution that calls for the action of the legislature when its function event impugned, that the communication be written to G5 again since that we will be closing today that G5 appear before the leadership of the House of Representatives on Monday. And when G5 is appearing, it should appear with a lawyer who wrote, instead of taking the key of communication to the Chief Clerk office by intent writing the lawmaker's office to give reason why, first, they should not be here in content before addressing the issue. If I may attend a second.
If I may attend a second, are you ready to vote? All persons who are in motion again, we must say yes. Against motion of this carry, my Chief Clerk is acting accordingly with the motion. Nice. Is there another messalina? Would you go to Honorable General's floor?
Honorable Deputy Speaker and Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding, Distinguished Colleagues, uh, with reference to the messalinas, I have a communication on the agenda and it was kept, so I will appeal to the Bureau of the, the Presiding so that that communication can be read because it affects all of us seated here. Given the fact that a census was conducted up to now, we do not know the provisional result of the census so that it can inform us in setting the new threshold for our electoral district. So I appeal to the Bureau of the, the, uh, Presiding for that communication to be read. Thank you so much.
Honorable General, we, I think it's just unfortunate after our consultation and what we go to leadership to cease of this and that the discourse subsequently, the letter. Thank you. Honorable Decisive Court.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Co-Presiding, my colleagues, the issue that has to do with the GSM companies is becoming worse on a daily basis. Right now, I will speak in Lofa for the past four days. There has been no network after this specifically from Orange and another road star. I'm currently asking the body to please allow the GSM company to appear, be appear before the committee and tell it all what is unfolding because we remember them and nothing is done. And they continue to play game for the network where our poor recharge, they cannot get refund of their money, stealing from our pay in their millions. I'm appealing fellow colleagues that appear to us and tell us or before the committee, letting us know what is unfolding. Honorable Speaker and the Honorable Deputy Speaker and Co-Presiding, that is my point of, and a messalina.
Thank you colleagues, we encourage you to take that to leadership. I will be part of leadership as soon as I can to close today. But I think it's something that require all of us attention. Thank you. Honorable General? Information, sorry, Honorable General, information for Honorable General, Honorable General for me.
Thank you. Presiding, Co-Presiding, distinguished colleagues, honorable distinguished members, the information here is that Honorable Decisive Court on Lofa away the seventh quarter is before the committee. But it's good that this body being formed of actions have been taken. And we strongly believe that the problem that our people are encountering now is for the regulators, not the GSM companies. I think we need to bring the regulator and make them to understand that they are not sitting there because we want their safe honor and condition. When our people are suffering, they are the one who need to go out there and handle. We, up to today's day, Honorable Presiding and colleagues, three weeks running now, the committee supposed to vote to ensure that some of these things are done and not with the GSM company. The regulators have been necking on them. I just thought it was to bring, just to provide our information to this body, that it is the regulator that we need to bring here and not the GSM company. Thank you.
In addition to the work of the committee, Mr. Chair, can the leadership just cease of this and let them down to make sure that a deal for is done? I just want information for the chair. Probably give us support.
Mr. Presiding, Mr. Co-Presiding, colleagues, again, let me say thanks to all the colleagues for raising this issue. And let me also say thanks to Honorable Glegia Dohato for also supporting.